I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in my nation under God, in the physical, in the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna kinda wing this for a minute, but for all of those who would like to speak for or against this case, I'm gonna have you swear in. But first, I kinda wanna give you some instructions. Thank you. On how to do that, if you'll please come up and just speak to the situation that we're speaking to, not repeat somebody else's comments and stay on point. If you will please mute your phones so that we don't have phones ringing in the middle of it, and that includes all of us, so check phones. That will be great. So, welcome to this Planning Commission meeting on April 26, 2022. What I'd like to do now is go ahead, and if there are any here who think they would like to speak to any of the cases tonight, either for or against, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Oh, sorry, roll call. Thank you, Commissioner. Roll call.
Commissioner Michelle?
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Here.
Commissioner Wiley?
Here.
Chairman McLean?
Here. Okay.
Young is also here.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Okay. Back to the, our first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes? And then on this case 223101, preliminary plat for Jackson County, or Jackson Drive Industrial Park, the case is to be continued to the May 24, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Is there a vote on that, or, I'm sorry, what, I'm not following?
We haven't voted yet.
Somebody's gonna make a motion to do that? Okay, you said it's to be continued.
No, sorry, that's the case 2212504. So, we've got two things, sorry. Let's do the agenda, the consent agenda first. Do I have a motion? To approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I believe there's someone here to, has requested that the preliminary plat for Jackson Drive Industrial Park be taken off consent agenda.
To be taken off the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Has requested staff remove the item from the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Has requested staff remove this item from the consent agenda.
And then what happens?
It goes on to the regular agenda.
For tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, can I express my opinion about this?
Yes.
I think, I think since it was, we were planning to have this on the consent agenda tonight, which means a series of things, which means it wasn't announced to the public that we were gonna have a public hearing, right?
Well, even-
And so, so are there, I mean, is the applicant prepared for a public hearing tonight?
Uh, he's right here, I cannot speak for him. There is, just because it's on the regular agenda doesn't mean it's a public hearing. It means people have the option to speak, but it's not advertised and noted and everything like a regular public hearing.
And so, should we get, should we give people notice, though? That's my, my concern, is that we haven't given people notice.
Well, we don't on plats, we don't give notice on plats.
Right.
Is there more administrative approval than public input approval?
So, would it be more appropriate if we have these people who have come to speak to this case wait until the council meeting?
I, I'm, I'm sorry.
No. So, do we wanna remove it, take it out of the consent?
Madam Chair, if I might, so, just to clear up some confusion potentially, when any item is on a consent agenda, it's been noticed up under the Sunshine Law that it is, is an item that, that will be considered by the commission at that evening's meeting. Typically, the indication by being on a consent agenda is there are no controversial issues or no issues that need to be discussed further, hence consent agenda, it can just pass through.
Right.
It is very regular, and you can actually see in the, in the, the actual agenda itself, it says that a commissioner or a staff member may pull something from the consent agenda for further discussion. As long, if it were required to have a public hearing, we could not have put it on the consent agenda because then we would have to notice up that public hearing. But this is highly appropriate and a normal process where if something comes off the consent agenda for further discussion, that you actually do that, and then you just, you, because then it's no longer something that is routine or would, would go without speaking to. And so, in this circumstance, it appears that, I assume that it's Mr. Borders that's asking to pull it off. As, as a staff member, it would require either staff or a commissioner to do that. But you can do that, then it would just join the, the regular agenda, and I would just suggest that we would move it to, it would still remain number two, it would just be something that would be after the, the discussion of the consent agenda.
So, you're saying it would be appropriate to do that tonight and not move it into the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And I would say, I guess, with respect to the question of just pushing something along to the council, it is this commission's responsibility to make recommendations on the items that go to council, so it would be inappropriate to just push it through at that, that point. We do need to discuss it here.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we take case 223101 off the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Michelle? Okay. Any discussion? All right. Will you take a roll, please?
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. So, we're moving, we're taking case 223101 off of the consent agenda, and we will discuss it next.
And now, Madam Chairman, it would still be appropriate then to approve the consent agenda, which now consists only of the minutes?
Yes. So, I will now take a motion to approve the consent agenda for just the minutes.
Excuse me, have you, should you include in that, that continued case number three?
Can I include it?
No, three is something separate.
Well, if it's to be continued, and it's, it can be all done at once. I don't see any reason why it couldn't be done at the same time.
But we're discussing number two tonight.
It's two separate motions. The first motion would be to approve the consent agenda, which consists only of the minutes. Then there would be, the next item on the agenda would be the case to be continued, which would be a separate motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the commission meetings from April 12, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? We'll call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. The consent agenda for the minutes has been approved. Okay. Now, let's go ahead and do the continued case, and then we'll do the case 22310, if that's okay. Does anybody have any? You're good? Okay. So, case, continued case 2212504, rezoning of PUD 2351 South Hayden Street will be continued until the May 24, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move we continue case 22-125-04, rezoning PUD 2351 South Hayden Street to the May 24, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Case 20, case, continued, case number 2212504 has been approved to be continued.
I have a vote.
Oh. Sorry.
Don't we have to take a vote?
Who was the second?
That was me, Nes.
Ah, okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Now, it's been approved. Case 2212504 has been approved.
Has been continued to the next meeting.
Has been continued to the next minute meeting. Thank you. Somebody should've eaten dinner.
We're just getting started.
Madam Chairman, now would be the time to bring up the item that was pulled off the consent agenda, so it would be the appropriate time to speak of case 22310-01.
All right. That is what we will do. Okay, we are opening the public hearing portion of our meeting. So, first, we will do case number 22310-01, preliminary plat, Jackson Drive Industrial Park, 2808 South Jackson Drive, Jeremy Hole from Hallmark Construction. So, will the applicant come forward?
Do you want me to go over this before the applicant does that?
Oh, sorry, staff report.
Yeah, this is an application by Hallmark Construction to, for a final plat for the north, basically the property around the northwest corner of Arding Mize Road and Jackson Drive. It contains a little, about 41 acres or so. They're dividing it up into eight lots and one track, the track being a detention basin. It's a non-buildable track. You can see the location of the property there in the red oval. It's just on the northeast corner there. Jackson Drive is immediately to the, to the right or to the east. Little Blue Parkway is further to the, further to the east. Arding Mize is on the south. It has, one of the lots actually accesses Arding Mize. This is the surrounding zonings of the property. The actual southern end or southern fifth of the property is on C2 General Commercial. The rest of the property's been zoned in I1 Industrial for probably 30 years or more. It's a comprehensive plan, recommends, I think it's, uh, business park uses for this property. That is the purplish color on the map. The yellow color to the east is single-family residential or existing neighborhood residential. This is an aerial photograph of the site. It does include some of the, this aerial includes some area that's actually not included in the plat. This just gives you a kind of a overall view of its location. This is the plat itself. North is actually on the right, so this should be flipped, so it's flipped to the, counterclockwise. Jackson Drive is on the south side. There is a loop road that serves multiple lots on the interior. And then a long Jackson Drive, excuse me, a long Arding Mize on the south, or is another lot that's actually accessed by Arding Mize. Like I said, this property has been zoned industrial for many years, except for the very southern portion of the lot, which is C2, which will be its own property. It will not be a, it will not be really accessed by the other parts of the subdivision. Staff does recommend approval of this with some conditions. One is add note onto the final plat, there will be no direct access vehicular access onto Jackson Drive for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 8 show required sidewalks on all new street frontages. Basically, there no access onto Jackson Drive for all the properties that front onto Jackson Drive. The building lines can be removed from the plats, from the, all the lots, and instead of conveying Track B, which is a, actually a small piece that is right there, to the lot to the south, include this, that lot, that little track into the southern property and not, you know, do it all at once, basically. There are stream buffer areas on the land, show that on the final plat. The street name needs to be changed from Little Blue Expressway to Jackson Drive for the main street. I believe there's still a note that says it's Little Blue Parkway. Final street names and addresses will be assigned during the final plat process. Incovance and restrictions must be created for this subdivision to own and maintain the detention basin. Submit a draft copy with the first final plat submission. Those were the conditions, and staff does recommend approval of this. And there is somebody with the applicants to speak here as well.
Hey, sir, what about 6, 7, 8, and 9? Back page.
Oh, I just don't have together here. The detention basin on Track A will be utilized, but its condition needs to be, needs to be confirmed that it is in working order and meets the stormwater design requirements. Industrial lots will follow the water quality best management practices. These can be built during the development phase or building phase, building permit phase. A loop water main will be required for this development with no dead-end mains, and water mains will be required to, to maintain a minimum of 10-foot horizontal separation from all storm and sanitary mains and structures. So, the water main alignment will need to be revised to reflect this requirement.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward?
No, you need to move on.
If you'll both state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
Okay, you guys need to lift the microphone and speak into the microphone. Do I gotta push the button?
That should be on.
Okay. I'm Jeremy Hole. We're with Hallmark Construction. We're right here next to this. We're 2940 South Jackson, Independence, so.
Thank you. And you?
My name is Brett Starr, and I'm with Missouri R E L L C, working in conjunction with Jeremy. I'm also the owner of Otter Beauty Center, which is also on this plat as well.
Thank you. Okay. If you would kinda tell us anything about this project that you would like us to know, if more information that's on the page in addition to what the staff gave us.
We're just trying to develop a nice property for rental income. We plan on owning and maintaining the property. That's really about it.
Yeah. I'd just like to add that, you know, we wanna create a place that will draw business in. We have a lot of ideas, but I, I've traveled a lot in my sales experience, been to a lot of different industrial parks, and just over time, they just sometimes become dilapidated. And we wanna make someplace that businesses will be proud to be part of this development, and it will also inspire their employees to come to work at a really nice location with lots of greenery, trees. In the very north corner, we plan on putting a little park, hopefully getting a permit to put in food trucks, so all these businesses can have a nice little place to go grab lunch, et cetera, and just make it a real nice community, not only for the community around us, but also for all the businesses that are there.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we ask the public to participate?
Thank you for, for coming today to present your, your case. I didn't, I wasn't following what you had said about some sort of a food opportunity for lunch, or?
Oh, well, in the very southern tip, there's a little water overflow in that area, and I just want, and there's some easements in there that we really can't utilize, but I just thought it'd be nice to make a nice little greenery place where picnic tables, food trucks, if the city would permit it. And just so that it makes it really convenient for people to go down there and gather and have lunch, have meetings outside, outdoors, have some activities for kids that can do stuff on the weekends, et cetera.
And it's not part of this preliminary plat, but Brett does own that section and all the other buildings within there.
So, Lot 7, Lot, and then Track B?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The existing detention basin that's up there at the, in Track A at the north end, that's been in existence for some time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I know the staff has made a, made reference to the fact that, let's find it here, mutilized, but a condition needs to be confirmed, that it needs to be in working order and it's a stormwater design requirement. So, what kind of, I mean, can you go a little bit more into sort of the development that you're planning here that wasn't really disclosed? You just, businesses and folks coming to work. So, is there gonna be a lot of pavement? Are we talking about a lot of runoff? I mean, I'm assuming that, that detention is not gonna be sized according to what, what you're planning. So, could you talk a little bit more about the actual plans for the, those properties? Are you gonna be doing ground leases and, and somebody developing, or are you going to be building to suit? What's sort of your plans for the property?
We're gonna build spec buildings.
Okay, can you put the microphone maybe up on the higher tier and then try to speak into it?
We're gonna be doing spec buildings for the most part, you know, we're gonna build them and then lease them out. We're, we will build the suit, but that's not the intention. As far as the water detention, we got a letter, a letter here with, from Independence, where they have studied it back in 2008, and it can, they can handle the project, you know, fully developed, fully concreted. It's equivalent to an 84-inch pipe, but we will, you know, do our engineering on it. Most of this will be concrete. There'll be green space on the Jackson Drive side, you know, of course, any undeveloped portion around the buildings.
You said that report from, was from 2008, is that correct?
Correct.
Would that be considered an up-to-date adequate report?
Well, they would need to, when they turn in plans for the streets and stormwater and water and all that sort of, they'll have to turn in information showing that the basin is adequate to handle new additional stormwater and is in good enough condition that it won't need repair or digging out or whatever. So.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioners, do we have any more questions?
Man, I have a question here for, okay, you said you're gonna put food trucks down across from Track B. How are people from lots 1 through 6 supposed to get there to go get food? I mean, that's what I was trying to figure out that, since there's no street access, correct?
Not from, not from Jackson Drive or the new road in there. They would be an Arding Mize and existing-
Right.
-road that's already there.
Okay, I'm just curious on that. So, you guys are the ones that already own Track B, already have buildings and?
Yeah, Brett does.
Okay. You, okay, you don't, you have any idea what kind of tenants you plan on having, or have you talked to anybody, or is it just all startup?
All startup. I mean, we've had some preliminary conversations with an ambulance company. We've had preliminary conversations with an insulation company. It would, you know, just be, it's not manufacturing, just, you know, they come in and cut it to order and deliver it.
What's our, our plan is, there's a, through the studies that I've read, there's a great need for light industrial buildings, not only here in the Kansas City metro area.
Sir, could you, sure, speak?
Oh, not only here in the Kansas City metro area, but across the United States. With the transition of more and more realtors or people buying products online, that gives smaller companies an opportunity to sell their wares and store them and then fill big distribution centers like Amazon, et cetera. So, I have, I actually have a food trucking company that has different food trucks that wanna store their vehicles. They make food trucks. They lease some, they rent them out. So, it's just small little companies that are needing space to work, and we wanna set up these buildings so that they have an opportunity for growth, so they don't have to move every time they expand. These buildings will be broken up into smaller 5, 6,000 square feet, but if they need additional space, we can take down a wall and, and expand them into other areas.
Okay. Does that answer my question? I have something for staff. Jackson Drive, have we considered making that a boulevard or anything? I mean, that's, has been brought up in the past, I think.
Not to my knowledge. I mean, it was just paved with, I mean, it was just constructed like 10 years ago.
Okay, but was it construction for heavy semis? I mean, I'm guessing these guys are talking semis, or you guys not talking semis?
I think, you know, like, for example, our businesses, we have semis coming in occasionally, but it's not like a huge distribution center where they have 50 or 100 docks and trucks are coming in all the time. Like, take, for example, an HVAC company. They're gonna get some equipment in, they're gonna store it, they're gonna have it pre-sold, then they're gonna go out and install it. Another shipment's gonna come in maybe another week later, two weeks later.
Well, I know I've heard concerns about that Jackson Drive does go to residential areas. That's why I thought they've had some plans and were talked about maybe turning that into a boulevard. Does anybody know? Nobody knows? Okay.
No.
Okay. That was a question I had.
Okay. How about if we go ahead and open it up to the public? So, thank you, gentlemen. I'm gonna open it up to anyone. Do we have an order or, oh, okay. Okay. Anyone who would like to speak for this case, please come forward.
Can I ask one more question of staff before he starts? How long has that, has this land, has this area been zoned industrial? Do you know?
Well, I've been here about 22 years, and it was in zoned industrial when I started.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Will you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Randall Pratt. My office is at 214 South Spring Street, Independence, Missouri.
Thank you.
I'd like to support this with conditions. The conditions that you'll see summarized on the handout that I left at, at your seats before the meeting. I'd like to provide some context or a big picture before I talk about the details that are on this sheet. For historical context, this is the site of one of the three buildings for the Van Trust project that was not approved. Two, three years ago, this Planning Commission rejected it 0 to 4. That project included a building of, I think, about 300,000 square feet on this particular site. There's great sensitivity, as you would fully expect, because the backyard of the Van Trust project was directly adjacent to the backyards of homes in the Castle Woods neighborhood, if I have the subdivision correctly. There may be another one there, too, that I apologize if I don't have that name. But with respect to the sensitivity to the neighborhoods, my understanding of the Jackson Drive project was that the setback was some mere 25 feet or something like that. It was very close and did not fit in context. So, I'd like to comment about context because we have a lot going on in this part of Independence right now. This part of Independence is also the subject of the North Point Project, which is before the city council on Monday of next week. We also have another agenda item this evening that talks about multifamily development in very close proximity to this particular project. There's been a lot of conversations in our city about the best way to plan this area. It is a key gateway into Little Blue Valley. It's a place where Jackson Drive and the, and the Little Blue Parkway come together. You also know, down by I-70, those roads intersect, but they come very close together in this area as well. It is sensitive because of an elementary school that's the top of the hill, Blue River Community College, and a number of neighborhoods that are there. I say all of that because it is very important to carefully plan this area, to make sure that those uses that are next to each other are very thoughtfully done, and that the density and scale of the development is carefully planned to increase from lower-density uses, which would be single-family residential to the west, to higher-density uses, which would be large warehouses, which are all the way up by Lake City in the North Point proposal that's before the city council. Think of it in simple terms this way. We scale from low density from west to east, lowest density being on the west side by the residential neighborhoods, and the highest density to the east that is buffered by the Little Blue Trace Park. We also flow from the lowest density on the south end around Arding Mize Road, increasing to the highest density around Lake City Armory Ammunition Plant, because that is our I-2, or highest impact industrial activity in the city, at the Lake City- or highest impact industrial activity in the city, at the Lake City Armani Ammunition Plant. I support this with conditions because I think we do need a place for businesses to grow. The character of that neighborhood from the four or five businesses that are currently along Jackson Drive, as I understand it from memory, two years ago, I think the smallest user is about 14,000 square feet and the largest user, which was Ronson Manufacturing, now relocated to the old Kmart building on 24 Highway, that, I believe, is about 28,000 square feet for the building massing. When we had the North Point debate two years ago, there was some consensus, not complete consensus, but some consensus within the neighbors that it would be okay if additional buildings were built at about that same scale and massing. If we have the I-1 standards applied to it, if I'll be corrected by staff, I think it's a 50% site coverage ratio. And if we have a five-acre lot then with a 50% size or site ratio, that would allow about 100,000 square feet, if I do the math correctly. That would be between three and four times the size of the largest building that is there. We went through a long process together to develop consensus in our city about what a business park should look like. There were a number of amendments made to the Uniform Development Ordinance for that purpose. We developed consensus about a lot of things on how a business park development should fit with the neighborhood, how we would design that in terms of building massing, site coverage ratios, screening, a lot of different things were very thoughtfully done in Unified Development Ordinance for Business Parks. Those were developed in large part in response to the Van Trust project because we didn't know what a business park should look like. This was a portion of the area that was extremely sensitive and provoked that response and encouraged that collective effort together. So what I'm proposing is that you do approve this because we do have a need for businesses to relocate. We don't want businesses to leave Independence. The two applicants have businesses in close proximity. We want to keep them. We want to allow their businesses to grow and to have a place for them. I fully encourage that and support that need and desire. I believe the business park requirements for development use lot and building standards would be sufficient for their needs, for their purposes. We can certainly ask staff if they share that view. The site coverage ratio would be 25% instead of 50%. With a five-acre lot, that's more than 200,000 square feet, at 25%, that's a 50,000-square-foot building, which is almost twice the size of the largest building that is there. There'd be heightened landscape requirements, heightened requirements for the quality of development, which is vitally important at this gateway location, that we seek the highest quality development we can have for our city and not denigrate or diminish the quality of development we would have in the future. And I will say, as an owner of land that's across the Little Blue Parkway, these are the same standards that the development on my land would have to comply with. I'm not asking for anything different than what other development would be required to have in a business park context. But if we really want to have a quality development pattern in our city, we have to thoughtfully and comprehensively plan it, how it fits together. And beyond that, we have to have standards that, that require quality, which is exactly what we tried to do in the business park zoning designation. So for the two items that I proposed to you, number seven would be renumbered, since staff has a few more, but whatever the number would be, that the uses, the buildings would have to be in compliance with Business Park Zoning District Development Use Lot and Building Standards, that would be required. And secondly, the minimum exterior and interior setbacks from residential zoning districts shall not be less than 100, 100 feet. It would certainly be within your discretion to debate what that minimum number should be. I, I do not claim expertise. My understanding of the current I-1 district is that would be 25 feet, so this would raise it from 25 to 100. I would encourage support and in support approval, but on the basis that this development would fit in within the character that we're seeking, and I believe it would also meet the needs and expectations of the applicants.
Thank you. Hi, will you state your name and address, please?
Shelley Lee, 2400 South Glenview Avenue, Independence. I'd like to speak about Jackson Drive. It was a big factor in the opposition to Van Trust because there were going to be semi-tractor trailer trucks going up and down Jackson Drive. We now have over 100 homes in Prairie Landing, which is right at the corner of Castle and Jackson Drive. If you've been out there, it's a terrible hill, it's dangerous, we have school buses crossing there. I, you mentioned, it was interesting that you mentioned information about making Jackson a boulevard. While we haven't taken it to the city, there has been a lot of conversation about trying to keep trucks off Jackson Drive. If you look at this, it's a curve where they're going to be entering and exiting. Jackson Drive has multiple curves. We have light poles that are down now that have been knocked down, that have not been replaced. It's a, it's not a road for large trucks. Smaller trucks probably can come in and out of there without any difficulty. Large semi-tractor trailer trucks trying to make that quick turn on Jackson Drive is going to be very difficult, and it's going to be dangerous for the citizens that live right off Jackson Drive. Prairie Landing has no other way in and out of the subdivision on the east side. They have one way in, one way out, and it's Jackson Drive. They have no other choice. I live on the west side, I can go out the back way, but that's not convenient. So I use Jackson Drive as my main road that I travel on.
Let me stop you for just one minute. I apologize. Are you speaking for this case or against?
I just want to, I also agree that if it was smaller business park type units and not large industrial warehouses, that, where we could control the amount of trucks, I would be in favor of this. But under the circumstances, it's zoned industrial, there's no control over what size those warehouses are going to be unless you all take it upon yourself to make it fit the business park regulations. The reason citizens got involved with the business park regulations was because we didn't have any. And there, that was a huge problem with Van Trust because it was called a business park, but it was going to be industrial-sized buildings. This is being called a business park, but it's named an industrial park. So which is it? Is it an industrial park or is it a business park? So there's a lot, still a lot of confusion seems to be about what the rules are about what a business park is. These are smaller buildings, small, you know, one or two dock doors, not bringing in semi-tractor trailer trucks. We need to restrict that. We can't make that a shortcut. North Point's going to be going up and down Little Blue. Trucks are going to go the way they want to go for the shortest, from point A to point B. We've got to do something to keep the trucks off Jackson Drive, and that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you.
I live in Prairie Landing Subdivision, 2333 South O'Mill Avenue.
Thank you.
We've lived there now for 12 years. We enjoy that neighborhood. We are glad to see it's growing and houses being developed. And I don't want to repeat what the previous speaker said, but to say I agree wholly with what she's saying. One of the moments that catches my eye every day and every morning is a school bus that stops right at the top of that hill. There where Jackson and Castle intersect. Traffic backs up both ways, traffic in our subdivision is waiting to go across, and it is a, a constant threat to people coming and going. The city has placed one of the monitors that gauge speed down that hill. It flashes and tells you how, how fast you're going. The limited number of times that I've come in and out of that driveway, that the only driveway into Prairie Landing, that is always flashing in the 50s and 55s. Traffic is much above the speed limit and it comes directly down to the curve that we're talking about. So I, too, want to raise to the planning committee's attention that we must have some very clear direction about what goes in, what goes out of that area and that division so that it can be a prosperous and good area, but increased truck traffic and heavy traffic is just not a good thing, I see, for that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this case? All right, is there anybody who would like to speak against this case? Seeing none. Is there any more questions? I'm sorry, of the applicants.
I guess I have one question.
Okay.
Question for the applicant. The other thing I noticed on the, your preliminary plat, there's an existing ingress egress easement noted. Looks like it runs from, from south to north from RD Myes. It also looks like the parking lot, the southernmost parking lot in the current development, looks like it sort of hammerheads to the west there. Is there any intention to make any sort of a connection between track B and lot seven
Robert Walquist with Quist Engineering, 821 Columbus Lee Summit, Missouri. Yeah, we did lay that out to actually have a road down there, but staff recommended against that due to the fact that they didn't want it so close to that intersection.
With Jackson?
Yeah, with Jackson. So, and we agreed with that. So that, that's kind of a hard lot to develop because it's, one, it's floodplain, a lot of it, and then it has easements going right through the middle. So there are existing ingress egress easements off of a, a commercial entrance right there. So I think the intent is just to, they, or like you said, he's going to bring that forward as a site development plan for those individual sites, and at that time, staff will recommend what, or will, will negotiate that at the time. But right now, we're not putting anything on there. We're just plating it with this entire, to clean the plat up, so.
And then the other, only other question I had was, I believe, I wasn't completely sure what the building construction type was intended to be for these, pardon me, these projects that, that could be built on spec. Are we talking precast concrete? Are we talking tilt-up? Are we talking pre-manufactured metal buildings?
Pre-manufactured metal buildings.
Do you want me to repeat that? Pre-manufactured metal buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only other questions I have.
Okay. Staff, do you have any additional information before we close the public hearing?
Did you want to give the applicant any opportunity to rebut these comments?
Do you want to respond to the comments? No? Okay.
I didn't know, I don't know if the city council has any comments on Mr. Pratt's request to add those two comments to the bottom of the list of conditions of approval. I'm not sure that those can really be placed on a preliminary plat, but I'll let him jump in there and answer that question.
That's my question, is what this means for us. I mean, this is a, we were just asked to approve a preliminary plat, and now this is, this has become something else, so.
Based on comments this evening, and I don't know if Mr. Borders has any thoughts as to, you know, those recommendations, it appears to me that there's new information. If the commission would be more comfortable going forward with this by having it continued to the next meeting and allow the staff and the applicant to get together to discuss the issues that were raised here and bring this back at the May 10th meeting, you may be in a better place because, you know, we would, we would essentially need to probably take a look at some of these if that's the direction that the council would like to go. If you would like some further consideration on issues provided this evening, I think it only makes sense for staff to have the opportunity to kind of gather that information that, as you just heard it this evening, take that back, look through it, and then work with the applicant, and then bring this, this matter back before the commission at that next meeting.
Okay.
Well, my concern was is that the, Mr. Pratt's additional plat conditions are more zoning-related and relate to conditions that are not required in industrial park, and those should not be included on preliminary plat approval, that they would need to rezone the property to be PUD to get those conditions.
Right, and I guess, I mean, that's, to some extent, I know that we can't do that this evening for that very reason, so that's why I would recommend postponing consideration of this until there's some opportunity to have discussion with the applicant outside of this hearing to, to see if, if that is an option available in this circumstance. If that can't be worked out, then maybe other options can be explored before we bring it back to the commission.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we postpone this till further.
Okay, let me close the, the public hearing is closed.
There wasn't a vote.
Sorry, you're right. Never mind. Dang it, I wanted to do the gavel. Go ahead.
I make a motion that we postpone this to.
Yeah, can, before we do that, question for staff. And I lost it, which is great. No, actually, so the traffic has been brought up, but as a recommended from staff is that on Jackson Drive, lots one, two, three, four, and eight will not have access to Jackson Drive. Is that correct?
That's right. There's an interior roadway, there's no need to have access to Jackson Drive, and anyway, Jackson Drive is a limited access drive.
Okay.
And there's one curb cut out there now.
Okay.
That they're going to utilize that and then provide a ride-in and ride-out on the southern one. The northern access has a, is a full intersection, all-way intersection versus the south, which is a ride-in, ride-out.
Okay. And second thing, Mr. Pratt, I kind of brought up a, I think, an interesting point, and if we do continue it, I would be curious if the city could put together, so like, when you look at this area, because there are so many things happening to it simultaneously, basically, and all these things are being approved or denied, is it legal or can we look at like, let's say, everything gets approved for this area? Is there a way that the city can prepare something of like, this is what it looks like and this is what we've all kind of approved on? You know, if North Point gets approved, if this gets approved and what that area landscape gets, what all of that looks like if everything goes through? Because there are so many things that are happening there, so.
Yeah, I think we can put something together for you.
That'd be great.
Along that regard.
Okay.
Because we'll know in a week or so.
Exactly.
What's happening with North Point.
That would be great if the city could have, could do that, and sorry for the additional work.
Commissioner Nesbit.
I make a motion that we continue this so staff can reconfigure and look at different things that have been brought up tonight.
Is there a second?
This would be to May 24th.
No, I wanted to make sure what date was. He said 10th, and that's why I was like.
Well, we're not having a meeting on the 10th.
Okay. May 24th.
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Michelle. Nesbit was, made the motion. Okay, any discussion before we vote? Any more recommendations we want to make to the city that we would like to see before they come back?
I would like, I would like to see about the boulevard status going down through there on Jackson Drive. I'd like to see that, because I mean, that is a dangerous curve. I mean, I go to church up, down, over there, so I'd like to see something like that, too. That's what I'd like to see. So, and I know what they're talking about, going down a hill. You can just coast down that hill and get up to 55 just about, so I know it's kind of dangerous curve there, so I'd like to see that.
And I, I think it would be interesting to look at rezoning it as, as a business, what that would look like. Business industrial or business park, I mean. Okay.
That would be incumbent upon the property owner to undertake the rezoning.
Yes, the applicant would have to make that request.
Okay.
Had a traffic study would come with a final development plan, is that, or is a traffic study not warranted?
Well, we, our traffic engineer looked at this and he did not think it required a traffic study at this point because of limited access primarily and there being a driveway there already. I think it was planned to be something.
Okay.
Understood. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
I feel like this is a smarter thing to continue it so that we can, because it is an important area as we look at developing it, and we want to do it right. So, we do roll call, please.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case 2231001 has been continued to May 24th, 2022. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you again. Next case is 22-125-05, rezoning PUD 19515 and 19601, East RD Myes Road. City, will you give us a report, please?
Okay, again, on this PowerPoint, I mistakenly put the wrong case number, so you're correct. Yeah, it is 22. Yeah, it is, uh, 22-125-01, so, yeah. Um, so we're looking at the vicinity map here, um, just directly south of the area that we were, a little southwest, or southeast, but directly south the area we were just talking about, on the south side of Arty Mize, and not all the way to Jackson. There's a strip of land, Mr. Pratt's land, that, that is, um, there on the east, but there's three actually tracks that are between the subdivision and that slice of land going between Arty Mize all the way down to Jackson Drive, and that's the property we're talking about. Um, and this drawing shows it better, um, with the orange, um, outline there, and you can see where that is. In relation to the other areas around it, of course, we've got, um, single-family zoning right now all around, except for northeast of the property. And then this is the comprehensive plan with, um, a business park zoning and, um, and, uh, single-family zoning. And again, an aerial photo, they give you a little, uh, better viewpoint of the three tracks that were, um, I was pointing out there. Redwood Living requests to rezone a 45-acre, three-parcelled tract of land located west of Jackson Drive and south of Arty Mize Road. The proposed development will include a total of 100 and, 190 units in a mix of single-story, three- and four-unit buildings on what will be two lots. The applicant's intention is to provide units that, uh, feel like a single-family living space. Uh, the proposal indicates, uh, 34 buildings plus a dedicated leasing office and maintenance garage. I'm going to skip down here to these drawings real quickly. The exterior building materials will consist of vinyl siding with a wainscot consisting of a stone veneer. Asphalt composite shingles in a dark tan color will be used on the roofs, and all buildings will be rental units owned and maintained by the developer. Expected monthly rent will be, um, 1,800 to 2,200 per month, uh, not including utilities. All the buildings will be ax- ass- accessed by a... Let's go back up here. By a private loop street intersected by two short cross streets connecting, uh, to Arty Mize Road. Stormward detention basins will be sided in the northeastern, which is the upper, the, actually, the upper-left on this, north is to the left here, and the southeastern corners of the development, which would be the bottom right there. Um, a walking trail down in the bottom right is shown extending northwestward from a sidewalk along Jackson Drive, and then bending westward before bending back eastward to the Loop Road between two proposed residential structures. Uh, in addition to a walking trail and park benches depicted, the applicant should provide an additional project amenity such as a picnic area or park shelter amenity. Let's see if the... The development will provide, uh, 791 parking spaces. There will be 380 garage spaces as well as 380 driveway spaces. 106 units have, uh, two-car garages and driveway spaces, and 274 other units will have one-car garage and driveway spaces. Additionally, the development will provide 31 visitor spaces, and you can see those strategically scattered in, in different places, uh, along the Loop roadway. So there will be clusters of spaces, uh, perpendicular to the streets there. Uh, right-turn lane warrants at the intersection were analyzed, and, uh, no right-turn lanes would be warranted for either end of the Loop. Given that there is a two-way, uh, left-turn lane down Arty Mize Road, uh, left-turn lanes are, of course, are already provided for the property. So, excess, so, um, acceptable traffic operations can be expected in and around the proposed development, so no improvements, um, would be required. And, and then landscaping, um, street trees and shrubbery will line Arty Mize Road right away. Uh, a short line of trees and shrubs, and let's get a landscaping page here. A short, uh, now I've, the way this is rotated now, west is north on this drawing, and south is to the left, so. A short line of trees and shrubs will, uh, screen Building A from, um, single-family addition adjacent to the west. A high-impact landscaping screen with, would extend south of the detention base along the eastern property line. Uh, trees will line the sidewalks along Jackson Drive, and the plan indicates a pattern of streets within the subdivision behind the buildings in the middle of the Loop. Uh, lastly, the existing vegetation at the southwestern and northwestern corners and western sides of the property will remain. I'll go back through some of these drawings real quick. So that, I showed you, this is the basic site plan. This shows the topography, so you can see that hillside that, that drops down from the subdivision there on the west. And that this cross-section gives you an idea of, as, from the subdivision, what people will be seeing when they look down at the roofs of these, uh, these units down in the And again, we'll go through these pictures here, these simulator renderings. This is looking from Arty Mize, from the western of the, of the three tracks. This is the more eastern of them with the roadway that, or not roadway, but this driveway that penetrates into the interior of the, of the property there. And I walked up that and looked back toward Arty Mize to the north here, and then this is down into the interior again, farther into the property. This is standing, um, at the north end of the property, looking west up Arty Mize Road. And then this is the houses directly to the northwest, and the house and industrial buildings to the northeast, of course, looking, um, e- uh, east down Arty Mize there. This is from Jackson Drive, where it wraps around on the south side of the property, looking, and we're looking directly north into the interior. And then this, of course, is up, going up the hill around to go to 39th Street, and the other way, going back down toward Arty Mize. Real quickly, I'll go through the, um, recommendations for approval. Uh, staff recommends approval of this zoning request and accompanying preliminary development plan with the following conditions. Number one, the property must complete, uh, final plating prior to approval of any building permit. And number two, the, um, provide utility easements for water su- and sewer to serve the neighboring property to the east of the development, uh, wherever, uh, final engineering determines that that is appropriate. And, um, there's a slight, as you can notice, slightly altered, uh, number two, to not be so specific to a location. Um, number three, the street names and addresses will be assigned, uh, during the final development stage. Number four, the final plat must include covenants to ensure the long-term maintenance of both portions of the two-lot development. The final plat will have, uh, text indic- indicating the two lots, when sold, must be sold together. The final plat must provide, uh, 15-foot utility easements for, um, public water and, uh, public sewer, uh, utilities within the development. And number six, the project should include an additional amenity to serve the development. And I went right over the top of something a little, that I should have talked about a little earlier. Uh, I, I've been mentioning that there's a two-lot development, so, um, these 190 units are going to be on two lots and roughly splitting the property in half, 50/50. Um, I think that when the applicant comes up, they'll, they can give a little bit more explanation as to why, for financial reasons, they're needing to do that, so, um, that's the explanation for that.
Oh, you're done. All right, thank you. Will the applicant please come forward?
Not quite that tall. Maybe somewhere in the middle. Um, hi, my name is Ally Carroll-Zach. I work with Redwood Living. Um, my address is, uh, 707, 7007 East Pleasant Valley, Independence, Ohio, um, and I am here, uh, representing the company, representing the developer, uh, Redwood Living. Uh, Brian, I think you have a presentation? Maybe I'll go up here. So first off, I just wanted to, uh, introduce ourselves and, and our company. So Redwood is new to Kansas City, but we have been around as a company since, uh, for about the last, oh, awesome, thank you. Got it. Um, so Redwood as a company has been around, uh, for over 30 years. So first off, a little bit about us. We were founded in 1991, and we have eight core values. Our core value number one is that we do one thing really well. We have one product type, and that is single-story, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-car-attached garage apartments for rent. So we've built over 14,000 of these throughout mainly the Midwest. Um, so we started in the Cleveland area, Cleveland, Ohio. We spread out throughout, uh, we're, we're throughout eight states at the moment. Uh, we're moving into three new states right now. Uh, we're up in Omaha, uh, finishing up, uh, getting on our first sites under contract there, and we get a little twofer in Kansas City with, uh, Kansas and, uh, Missouri. So we, we're very proud of our product, though. All of our units are for rent, and we have over 100 neighborhoods of this product type. One thing that is very unique about Redwood and very important to us is that we have never sold any of our apartments in the last 30 years that we've been doing this. We build everything that we manage, and we manage everything that we build, and of those, uh, all of those neighborhoods throughout our past 30 years, we have never sold. So we maintain our product, um, we have our acquisitions team here. We do contract with, um, outside consultants, so McClure Engineering is working on this project with us. But we, we will get this site under contract. We have a construction company in-house. We will build the project. Um, we will have a Redwood employee who is overseeing, um, the general contracting of it, and, and who is our neighborhood superintendent. He'll be watching over it, um, and then throughout that process, we'll obviously build this out. And then we have a, um, property management team, property management onsite leasing team, that will keep it forever. Um, so that's a little bit about who we are. Um, like I said, we are throughout eight states, moving into another three, Ohio, Michigan, Indiana is kind of where we started and where we have our most, uh, the most of our u- our neighborhoods. We're also in the Carolinas. We have a couple sites in Kentucky. We're growing there, um, moving into the Chicago market, Iowa, we have a few in Des Moines, and then we are just getting started here in Kansas City. Now, when we come to a market, although we're new here, we are here to build a business. So we were out in Blue Springs yesterday, getting our final plat, uh, and final site plan approved last night. Um, we are all throughout the Kansas City metro. We have about five sites that we are working through and, and under contract and working on in, um, KC Mo. We have sites all around the area right now, so we're in Independence, we're in Blue Springs, we're working on projects and have a couple under contract, um, in Overland Park, we're down in Lenexa, we're over in Shawnee. So we are here to build a business, to stay and to have a presence here. So a little bit about who our residents are. While all of our apartments are market rate, and we do not have any kind of age restrictions, what you'll find is that we do a lot of statistical analysis of just who our residents are on the whole, and because of our product type, that two-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-story, private-attached-garage unit type, we find that we have a lot of empty nesters. We come to areas that are already established. Independence seemed like something that was so obvious for us because we're not looking necessarily into the, the Nashville. We're not looking to go to, um, places that are, you know, blowing up and, and everybody's going there. We're looking for places where there are already, there, there's already a bunch of people here that, that want to stay in that neighborhood. However, they want to downsize from their homes. Our renters, we find, are renters by choice. They could own a home, but they don't want to deal with that maintenance anymore. They don't want to deal with trying to figure out when the roof is going to go, when the furnace is going to go. So our residents are those, for the most part, who are empty nesters, or on the other end of the spectrum, you have some, um, young professionals. Again, only two bedrooms and two bathrooms. You don't typically get a lot of children. You don't have big families living there. Um, you have people like myself, I just moved out of my Redwood apartment, um, but you have young professionals who, um, maybe need it for that peace and quiet. We do really well with, uh, different types of, um, employees, like nurses, police, fire, um, those who maybe have off-schedule hours, those who don't want that, you know, shiny apartment with all the amenities in the world, and it's, it's this fun place to, to congregate by the pool. That's not who lives with us. Those who live with us need someplace that's just quiet. Their, their amenities are the peace and quiet. It's the, the attached garage. It's the single story. It's not having to, um, hear and interact with people constantly all around them. So a couple stats, like I said, about who our residents are. Again, across our portfolio of over 100 neighborhoods and over 14,000 units, our average age is 50.6 years young. Um, about 70% are empty nesters, and the majority come from a three-mile radius. Again, we're not pulling people in here necessarily from out of town. We'll get some of that, but for the most part, our residents already live in Independence. That's why we're very data-driven, and we, we look at areas on the whole, use statistics to try to figure out first and foremost where to point us when we're looking for locations. We zeroed in on Independence as an area where there's mu- most likely a need. The income is there, the residents are there, the age of residents are there, the age of homes are there. It indicated this was a good spot for us, and then we started looking for land, um, that would specifically meet our needs. Something else that's important about us, obviously, we've been hearing a lot about traffic tonight. So with our, our portfolio, you're looking at about 1.65 residents per home and only 1.5 cars per, per home. In addition to that, because of who our residents tend to be, there's a tendency for them to travel during off-hours. You're not getting, because you have the empty nesters or people who are there because they have weird... they have weird hours, pilots, that'll, you know, anybody with kind of off-hours or, it tend to gravitate towards us. Because of that, you don't have a ton of traffic coming in and out during the peak hours of, of the morning and the peak hours of the afternoon. We did have a traffic study done. It was completed by Merge Midwest. That traffic study took a look at, took a look at ArtiMize, took a look at Jackson, and Iva, I believe, is the, the road to the north, looking at those intersections. The recommendation was that no changes need to be made based on who our tenants are, the number of units that we had. There were no recommendations for, for any changes to accommodate that kind of traffic. Also with the school system, again, we do not age restrict, but just because of the nature of who tends to live with, in our apartments, we have found that throughout our portfolio, there's only about seven students that enter into the school system for every 100 units that we have. So in this case, we'll have, you know, 13, 14 would be, you know, 12 to 14 would be our guess based on the history of what, what we have been seeing. Now, we do pay into the tax system, so we find that typically, we're a net gain for the cities when it comes to paying taxes versus the number of students we add into the school system. Our standard lease term is one year, but we have up to two years in many of our neighborhoods based on the demand. We've been asked over and over again to have longer lease terms because people just want to stay and want to commit to us. Our average resident stay is 2.39 years, which is kind of unfair because of how much growth we have had as a company. Over the past couple of years, we've been delivering between 1,500 and 2,000 units per year. So as we add all those new units into the system, that number is a little bit skewed to the low side, when the reality is, many of them will stay longer than three years even. The project's just not that old yet. Like I said, up here, I also have the stat of 12% of residents stay more than five years, which is just a testament to the fact that they like living where they do. I mean, like I said, our renters are renters by choice. If they wanted to, they could leave and find someplace else to go, but they want to stay with us. Just a little bit brief about our background checks. So we do have a very comprehensive plan about, a very strict lease, about who is able to apply. We don't accept many, there's a number of items on our list that we don't accept, felons. Now, there is a process in place where there, if there are things in your background that would not necessarily count and would count against you, we have processes to review those on a one-off basis and go through each individual, so everyone has the opportunity to object if they were initially rejected. But we do have processes and checks in place, which is important for our residents to know that they are surrounded by those people that they would want to make sure that they're, you know, living next to, that they feel comfortable in their environment. So as Brian was mentioning, we have single-story. It is all, all of our units will be two-car garages. We do have vinyl siding, and you can see examples of, of our apartments here. We do have patios on the back, although in some cases, there's a particular unit type where it's screened in as well, which is really nice in the summer. My friend has one, it's awesome. You can see one of these, one of the pictures in the middle, I know Brian showed it, and I apologize later in this, I miss really showcasing this, but along ArtiMize Road, there will be that porch-type product. So as you're going along, along that, that prior, that public road, you'll see kind of the, just, it'll be porches along the front facing there. As you get into the neighborhood, it'll be all private drive aisles. We don't do public roads. We do private drive aisles. So throughout the private drive aisles, then you'll see more garages, which we, we dress up nicely. Our interiors range from 1,300 to about 1,620 square feet. So all of our unit types, again, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, but there's a little bit of a range. They have all open floor plans, but a range of different sizes. And then our largest units also have a sunroom on the end. This is just an example when we get the question of, well, who's to say that you're going to keep up your neighborhoods? This is an example of a site that we have in northeast Ohio. It was built in 2006, and in 2017, it won the Northern Ohio Apartment Association Key Award for Gold over, Gold Award for Overall Community Appeal. It's just one example of how we really maintain, and even though some of our product over time is going to start to look a little bit outdated, for example, this one has Formica. We do have a team, we have an entire division in place, our product department, whose job is to look at making sure that we are keeping up with the appearances of our neighborhoods. As it's time, we go through, we do replacements. So the Formica will change out to granite, whatever the next trend is. We'll constantly be looking at that and making sure that we adapt. We have our one core value of do one thing really well, but we want to make sure that we keep up with, with the times and the appearances. Keeping up our landscaping as well, making sure that, you know, because we don't sell, because we are keeping this, and because our residents could leave if they wanted to, we want to make sure that this community stays looking nice. It's also something to note that beyond just us prepping for this, as part of our financing, we have to put a certain amount away for capital projects. Not only do we have that in place, we also always exceed that to make sure that we have a nice fund in place in case we ever need to, whatever comes up, that we can replace that. Or if it's just a change that we decide this is for the benefit of the community, we're going to make that change. Again, a little bit about our maintenance. So we will have an onsite leasing team, we will have an onsite maintenance team that are full-time in order to take care of the, the community, but we'll also contract out landscapers and making sure that it's constantly maintained. Our residents will, they pay for their own utilities and they pay for their own rent, but as part of their rent, they do not have to have any maintenance. That is, that is on us, that's something we take care of. Because we have all private drive aisles, we plow the streets. We, if there's any cracks or anything like that, we take care of, of that maintenance. We take care of mowing, we take care of, again, snow removals on the sidewalk, string trimming, power edging, making sure that our neighborhoods look nice. So this is the location that we're talking about here, ArtiMize and Jackson Drive. We are not coming, we're not connecting to Jackson Drive. And then there's the, the piece that's sliver to the east of us that is not part of our, our property. Just in case you haven't driven down there recently. These were some pictures that I took from our Phase One environmental study. We're here to help clean up. So we are excited about this. We're excited we're not, not knocking down some pretty forested trees. We are fixing this. So hopefully, you guys see that as a benefit to the community. Specifically with the location, as you can see, to our west is a neighborhood, the Meadow Homes Association. We've been in contact with them, so for this, I know, we don't have, we weren't required to do a neighborhood meeting. We did host a virtual neighborhood meeting. We reached out to everybody who is provided within that 185-foot boundary, everyone who has provided invitations to tonight's, or announcements about tonight's public hearing. We also reached out to them, inviting them to a neighborhood meeting. I also specifically reached out to the president of the HOA, providing information, again, about us, answering questions, at least from my perspective. I believe that went overall pretty well, understandably, new persons coming in, development, who are you guys? But overall, the feedback that I've received has been pretty positive on the whole. Because, you saw the, the topography, because of that hill, we are being very careful about what that looks like and where our neighborhood is in comparison to where kind of that cliff almost is. So we've adjusted our neighborhood over to the east in order to avoid that. We do have a building up on the northwest portion. As Brian was showing, we have a specific landscaping, additional landscaping buffer between that building and the neighbors to the west of us, making sure, I mean, we want that buffer as much as they do. And then as you get over, it's about 370 feet from those neighbors to us. And so that's, that's a pretty significant distance that we're offset from them. On the south side, there are some wetlands. There's actually some wetlands that we're kind of trying to skirt around and avoid as well on the northern side. So on the southern side, there's wetlands, there's stream. So we're, we're avoiding all of that, but we're also adding in a walking trail so that our neighbor, or our, our residents have that amenity. They want to, you know, what empty nesters do, they walk. So we want to have that for, for our residents. So along, there's a couple different colors in here that show a mix of unit types that we have, that will kind of break up the streetscape based on which units are in which locations. I did want to note, it's only 182 units. Originally, we had a little extra bump out that we worked with staff on. We removed that based on some feedback that we had received, and so we're, we're down to 182 units, 34 buildings. It's 44.7 acres, give or take, which leaves us with about 67% open space and about four units per acre. Again, just kind of a bigger version of it. As Brian mentioned, it was brought to us that, that staff would like to see an additional amenity. This is an example from one of our other neighborhoods that we'd like to propose. We'd be happy to add this as well, along that walking path. Again, just another view of our floor plans, all of them, like I said, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-car-attached garage, ranging from 1,294 to 1,620 square feet. Some of them are a little wider, deeper, but just based on what that resident wants. And you guys have already seen this, but I wanted to show two. Here are some examples of not only renderings, but actual product type that we've built. And so kind of just a quick summary of some of the community benefits that we believe that we are bringing to Independence. A cleanup of, of, well, you saw it. A needing, a needed housing alternative. I know you all just went through a housing study. Part of that in Independence is an aging community. We believe that we're not going to solve every housing need that you have, but we believe that we do bring a needed alternative. Not only does this allow residents who are currently there and want to stay in Independence but don't have necessarily anything to go to that, that benefits them with the downsizing, they don't have to take care of that maintenance anymore, anything like that. It, it, it gives them that option, but it also then frees up those homes that they downsize from for a new generation to come in and sink their own spin on, sink money into, make their own. So we believe that it helps benefit the, the neighborhood and the entire community with that. We do bring in tax dollars, creation of jobs, not only a couple onsite people, but also just providing an opportunity for companies, local companies in the area to at first build with us, design the site, build with us, and then eventually, we'll, we'll always need painters, we'll always need landscapers. That onsite walking trail, and then avoiding as much wetlands as possible, providing, not only, not impacting the wetlands, there's a little bit of impact, but for the most part, avoiding those, but also providing the amenity of the walking path to, to really use that. That's what I have.
Thank you. The commissioners have any questions before we open it up?
It was mentioned in the report by staff that it was a mix of one and two-car garages. You said all two-car garages?
That is correct. It is all two-car.
So that's a shift there, okay. Is there anything other than the pavilion for the amenity? Is there like barcupits or anything along those lines, or is it just a kind of covered spot?
Just the, the walking trail, some benches in the pavilion.
And this might be more of a question for, pardon my mic on, I'm sorry, I'm glad you can hear me. More of a question for staff, maybe, but as far as the wetlands go, is this like a recognized wetland area? Does this require special protection? Is there any special stipulations that we need to be concerned with there?
I'm not familiar with whether there's, you know, been identified wetlands, but I know that this southern portion of the property, portion of it is in the, in the very northeastern corner as part of our stream buffer ordinance area where we have a riparian area where landscaping is not disturbed within that zone.
We did do a wetlands report. We've been working with Terra Technologies to make sure they, they've identified some minor wetlands, nothing major, that we'll work with them and work through the Army Corps to make sure that permitting is all appropriate and taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Staff mentioned at the beginning that the lot was split into two. Did we, I didn't, I didn't hear an explanation for that.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So yes, that just has to do with how our financing works. So banks typically, they, they don't want to take on the whole 182 units, so we'll do, it'll technically be with the, the phase line. Now, the way that we will go about this is that we would close on all of the land at once. We'd close on the construction loan for Phase One, that would incorporate, making sure that we can, so we'll mass grade the whole thing at once, we'll put in all the infrastructure at once, and then we'll build in, it will, we'll continuously build. As far as the city's concerned, you wouldn't know as how, how it's built out.
What's the average build time from start to completion?
So what we found is that from the time that we close and we start building, to the time that we have our first certificate of occupancy, it tends to be about a year. And then from there, we build anywhere between six to 10 units per month, weather depending, trades depending, kind of. So I'd expect in a site this large, be another two years or so before everything's absolutely complete.
Okay, so like one phase would be like one to two years, basically? Or two years to completion?
Yeah, and it would be continuous, so, yeah, so the whole thing would be done in that three-ish year range.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. What is the setback from the streets on the houses?
From the, the neighborhood to our west?
No, no, the streets themselves that you guys put in, what's your, what I want to say, parking area, is it 20, 40, 50?
That's why we have our engineer here. I'm going to let him answer. I know when I tap out.
Please state your name and address, please.
Greg Watson with McClure Engineering, 11310 Stringline Road, Lenex, Kansas. So the way they're set up with the, the internal drives, it's a 33-foot offset to one side and a 37-foot offset to the other. The difference being is there's a sidewalk on the, the side with the larger setback.
Okay. I was just trying to figure, because I'm, I'm always an advocate about parking, as I know, but you guys are saying two, I know, you already said, you already said what your 1.5 cars, but...
Oh, not even, I got, forgot something for it.
Yeah, and, and the, the way it's designed is that setback from the street to the, the garage is designed to allow for a car parking space within that area. So you've got your garage internal space and a parking space behind it
Right.
that has room between the, the building and the street.
So it looks like to me, you should be able to park, if they park two in the car garage and two behind, so basically four, four cars.
Pre-union.
We'll also have additional, you can see, kind of, in, in, great, it's really tiny, but there are additional guest spaces. We do not allow onsite parking, and that is part of our lease. So that is monitored by us, it's monitored by our leasing team.
So no onsite street parking, was what you're saying?
Correct, yep.
That's, I like that.
Yes, us too.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead and bring up anyone who would, thank you, anyone who'd like to speak for He's back.
I'm back, this is part two.
We need to know your name and address again.
Randall Pratt, 214 South Spring Street, Independence, Missouri, 64050.
Thank you.
As a, almost a philosophical comment, in the city of Independence, we think that multifamily's bad. We have a lot of resistance. I believe it was your last planning commission meeting, the McBee Project on 24 Highway was here, and there's a lot of conversation about that. I'd like to suggest to you that that about that. I'd like to suggest to you that that isn't the right answer for our development patterns for the future of our city, and I'd like to offer four or five reasons why. The first one, the continuation from my last points, is that we have to have some buffering use between the lowest density, which is single-family residential, and higher densities, which are business park or industrial parks. There has to be something in between those. You do not want to put residential next to an industrial park use. It's not even the best to put residential next to a business park. There should be something in between. Now, that could be a nice park, but you can't put a nice park everywhere, and the city can't afford to maintain parks everywhere you might want to have them, nor will landowners want to give you ground for parks all the time, since that's not a very high value. You could have a civic use, like a church, but civic uses are declining as church attendance declines and other interest in civic organizations is reduced. Or you could have commercial uses. Commercial use is declining, demand for stores, particularly big boxes declining with internet shopping. We should not expect commercial uses to provide buffering. Office uses are also in decline because of people working from home. During the pandemic, folks could figure out that you could do that, and we have excess office. What we don't have enough of in this city is multifamily. Multifamily is a very good adjoining buffering use from single-family residential as we grade up in density. So we need these uses as we grade up densities and intensity of uses, and multifamily's a very good use for that. In this location, we have single-family residential directly to the west, and we have not business park directly to the east, but we do have it to the northeast, and so it does provide buffering from the single-family residential to more intensive uses. My second point to raise is that there's really a market need for this. We don't provide choices for our residents to have this kind of housing product or opportunity, and we need it. We have folks that, exactly as the applicant says, they don't want to maintain their home, they want to rent someplace that seems like a single-family home, and this provides it. Now, I'm not aware of many opportunities like this in the city. The third is the financial reality that we face in that the typical cost of a single-family home to build it, builders have told me in recent, let's say, last six, 12 months, that it's very difficult to build anything for less than $350,000 with the cost of lumber and steel and concrete and labor and everything else. And the housing shortage that we face in our community cannot be solved by single-family residential if the price point for a new home is $350,000. That just doesn't work for our economy, and we have so many people that won't earn an income to satisfy that or support it, plus with higher interest rates. The next point I would raise is that there's a demographic need for seniors. I don't think I've heard that this was age-restricted for active seniors. I'm not suggesting that it would be, but I would say that this is a very suitable product for people that don't want to climb stairs and want to downsize, and we should provide opportunities for active seniors to have that. And lastly, I would say, we have a challenge to have quality management of rentals. I'm very much in favor of a company that retains ownership. The fact that we'll be plotted with only two lots will make it very difficult to sell off individual units, and that encourages common or joint ownership. And the fact that it's maintained centrally is a significant benefit that we retain quality. So if you wanted to summarize my comments, multifamily, not a bad thing. We need it for buffering uses, and this is a good way to have it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Go ahead and come up, sir. Just state your name and your address.
I didn't swear in, I did it earlier because I wasn't aware that this case was here. I just saw the one that was on there first, so...
So you haven't been sworn in yet?
No.
Oh, my goodness.
I just want to make it official.
Well, thank you, because, yeah. All right, will you raise your right hand for, please? Do you swear to tell the truth to this commission? Please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. You are officially sworn in, and your name and address again.
My name is Mark Mayfield. I live in Meadow Hills in an adjoining property to the property that they're considering building on. I've lived there for two years, and the reason why I moved there is because I like the seclusion, the quietness, and the wildlife. And to their dismay, there is something they might have a concern about with apartment, there's bald eagles that live in that pond that are there, or around that pond that's in the property. So that's one thing you might look into. And all the people who live on my street that joins that property are against this. They're not here tonight, but I'm going to get a petition up. I'm sure they'll want me to go ahead and do that, because this property will make all of our properties decline in value. And he's talking about, you can't get a mortgage. Yes, you can. You get a mortgage cheaper than what these properties are renting for.
Sir, can you be sure you use closer to the microphone and maybe lower it a little bit, please?
Yeah, the idea that you can't get a mortgage for $1,800 to $2,200 a month, all the, almost all the properties in Meadow Hills are that or less, and the properties are a lot more valued than these properties are about to build. I'm an empty nester myself, and I live in a three-bedroom, three-car garage house in Meadow Hills, and I'm perfectly fine with it. And I don't want to have to move, but if they build this, I might have to really seriously consider, because there's going to be all this construction going on for God knows how long. You're going to have all that big machinery running, and all the noise, the dust. And we all live, my whole street, everybody's against this because we don't want to have this, to have to live with this. And as far as a walking trail, we already have a walking trail that we all take care of, all the people who live there. And so, yeah. I'm just going over my notes here that I took while they were talking about. Okay, yeah, I covered about all the points here that I had on it, but yeah. Right, the property value will, it will make our property value decline, and so for that reason, and a lot of my neighbors are definitely against this proposal, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak against this case?
Madam Chair, I got questions for that. Put you back on the spot. Okay, you say the rent's going to be between $1,800 and $2,200. Have you guys done a study? Is that feasible for this area? Have you?
Yes.
I'm gonna say it's not, but I'm, because I already know of places just like yours that are renting probably for about $1,400 to $1,600.
Sure. So, so we do comprehensive analysis of, now, it's a combination of local apartments and local housing. So I can tell you, and I'm hoping I don't butcher this, I think it's Azure is an apartment complex nearby. It's about 1.5 or 1.4 miles away from us. I looked this morning, and they were, their three-bedroom apartment for 1,300 square feet is renting at $1,874 per month. Now, that's a three-story walk-up. We believe that, you know, we can compete with that. There's going to be people who don't want a three-story walk-up with a carport somewhere around the corner from them.
Well, I understand that. I'm just comparing yours to a place that I know of that's up north.
Sure.
I mean, that's what I'm comparing, because I called them today to ask them how much their rent was, so that's why I was asking you. I mean, because I didn't know what your rent was till I heard $1,800 to $2,200. That kind of threw me up a little high.
Yep.
So, and that's just like what he was saying there, that you're looking at somebody that has to be making over 20 bucks an hour to have them even live in the place, is what it sounds like.
So, like I said, we use demographics when we try to find locations that would fit our needs. So yes, it does sound high. I know we're all dealing with sticker shock right now of what, what housing costs. With that said, in comparison to a single-family home, one thing that you have to take into account is that it's not just that mortgage payment. That's, we hear that all the time. Well, I can get a mortgage for less than that. Yes. What happens when your roof goes? What happens?
Right, I understand, I understand all that, yeah.
Yep. So we believe, we have studied, we've looked at housing, we've looked at other apartments, 14,000 units, so we wouldn't be in business today if we got that wrong often.
I just want to make sure, I mean, it sounds like you have. My next question's going to be, as what he brought up, the area that he's talking about, did you not say it's a 300-feet buffer between that neighborhood? Is that correct, or am I wrong?
So from the, 370 from, and you can kind of see it on this, where that property line is up into where the curve is. That's, that's the buffer.
So that's 370 feet, but it's mainly a hill, right? So they're looking down over the top of you.
Yes.
Correctly. So that hill, really, nobody can walk up and down that hill? Is that what I'm thinking about? I mean, I really, I'm trying to picture the area.
Yeah, I wouldn't advise it. I mean...
My next question's going to be, and I don't know if you know the answer. We have this buffer area that you guys are not doing there on Jackson. Is that, is that part of somebody's property? Do you know what, anybody have any development for that? Is that going to be a...
So I've been contacted by our neighbor to the east, and he has asked us, and as part of the conditions for approval, we've been asked to stub sewer and water there. As Brian mentioned, originally, their staff had recommended a couple key points. We've just asked that, we're definitely open to stubbing utilities to that property, just once we do a little bit more engineering. I don't know what the plans are for that. I know in the comprehensive plan, it's indicated for business park, but I don't know if they're, I don't know if the applicant's here or not. I've only talked to him on the phone, or the owner, sorry, is here or not. I don't know what the future actual plan is for that.
Is it the same owner that you guys are buying property from, or is it...
It is not. It is a different owner.
Different owner. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any, go ahead.
I believe I've asked this question of city staff before on multifamily. This is all built slalom grade?
Yes.
There's not a requirement for any sort of a community storm shelter, and you guys are not providing any sort of point of refuge?
I'll have to defer. Is there, we build to building code. So if it's in your code, we do have an option, a product type that's, it's part of our master bathroom, a way to build that. So whatever, whatever the building code is, we will adhere to that.
Okay. On the extra amenity, I know that Commissioner Michelle talked about it also. I just want to make sure that you are amenable to doing something a little more as the city requested.
So like the pavilion? The pavilion, yes, we're, yep. Yeah, what I showed you is that's at one of our other neighborhoods. We'd be happy to provide that.
Okay. Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's any more discussion, or I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would actually just like to remind residents that this is the first step in a process, and so if there are an entire row or multiple houses that are against this project, that they come back during a city council meeting, when they were to take this up, if we hypothetically approve this.
It's a very good point.
Madam Chair, did you officially close that hearing?
No. The public hearing is officially closed. Any more discussion?
You got to use the gavel.
Gavel dance. Okay, I would entertain a motion, or if we have any more discussion?
I have a, I have a question. Is it worth adding a seventh stipulation for the, just to make sure that wetland protection measures are addressed?
I would like to see that. I think that's...
And then the other thing I think we need to do as part of a motion is to clarify the language on number two, which is would relate to taking the specific, specific locations of the stub outs off and making it, you know, pending sound engineering design or something along those lines.
Do you have good wording?
I'll figure something out.
I have it on a post-it already that I read.
What's that?
I said I have it on a post-it already that I read during the presentation.
Oh, can you read it again?
If you bring it to me, I'll read it out loud.
So I added after development there, wherever the final, let's see, wherever the final engineering, let's see, wherever final engineering determines is appropriate.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so we're changing the words on number two, and then number, adding number seven and including a stipulation about the wetlands. What's good wording for that?
To my knowledge, she said she already had a study on the wetlands, so I guess we'd have to go off her study they have, or do we have to have our own staff?
Well, generally, they would, if they have a study done, they would submit it to staff for review.
Okay.
I was just prompted to ask real quick, because there's a couple differences from the staff report. So the number of units and the fact that we are only doing two-car garages, does that need to be updated?
Yes, that needs to be updated, too.
Well, it's not part of the, it's not part of the condition, so it was just part...
This is zoning, so that'll be on the final plan.
So what do you want to do about number seven?
Project will adhere to establish wetland protection strategies.
Did you get that, counselor?
Working on it.
I'd take it in shorthand, but I really wouldn't be able to read it.
President Michelle, here to establish wetlands.
Okay. Any more discussion or motion?
I'll make the motion. Do I need to read out the, do I need to read it out, or I just say as stated?
You can say as, as stated, and I believe I have it and staff has it. What the changes are.
Madam Chair, in the matter of case number 2212505, rezoning PUD at 19515 and 19601 East Arty Mize, I move for approval with the stated recommendations as amended and modified as stated by the counselor.
Perfection. Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Wiley? Okay, we will call for a vote.
Commissioner Michelle?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes.
Thank you, and best of luck, and thank you for investing in our community. Okay, next case, 16308 East 31st Terrace Street, case 22400-05.
Madam Chair, hold one second. So, fellows, I know that you were trying to get our attention, but the public, it was already closed when you were doing that. I just wanted to let you, I just wanted to let you know. Okay, thank you.
We're ready.
Okay, this is the application by Kevin Alguire of Little Buddy LLC to open a, to start a short-term rental at 16308 East 31st Terrace. As you can see from the aerial, or excuse me, the vicinity map, this is east of Lee Summit Road by three or four blocks. It's on the northwest corner of Reynolds and 31st Terrace. This shows the zoning for the surrounding area. That's pretty much all single-family Again, Harris is to the, excuse me, and Reynolds is to the, to the... Again, Harris is to the, uh, excuse me, and Reynolds is to the, uh, to the east of this corner, and, uh, Thirty-First Terrace is to the south. This is an aerial photograph. It's kinda small, but you can kinda see what the neighborhood looks like. It's all pretty much single-family throughout that area. The school, the only, the significant, uh, well, the significant, uh, landmarks in the area is, uh, Drum Farm Villas is to the east side of, excuse me, the west side of, uh, Little Blue Lee Summit Road. And then there's also an elementary school just north of this site. This is the aerial map that shows the location in the red box. You can see that Thirty-First Terrace on the south there, and Reynolds on the east side, which is the right side. Typical house of this neighborhood. Um, this is the front of the house. And, uh, and then another picture of the front of the house, and I'll kinda go over this now. Uh, this is a tan, split-level house, contains about nine hundred fifty square feet, and has three bedrooms. Uh, the bedroom, the three-bedroom arrangements will allow for maximum occupancy of six adults and ten total guests. The applicant plans to register on Airbnb and another smaller website. They will use Ted's Try Service. It has a double-wide garage facing East Thirty-First Terrace, as you can see there. It's accessed by, it's roughly fourteen feet wide, and extends about forty feet from the street to the house. It can provide off-street parking for four to five cars in total. There is a gravel area, which you can see here on this, uh, photo of the east side of the house, uh, that cannot be used for customer parking unless it is paved. They mentioned in their letter they could use that, but they can't use that. Um, they indicate that, uh, Airbnb guests are vetted, and the owner has the right to deny any stay as a guest. They will use a property manager who lives in Smithville but manages several other properties in Independence to oversee the site. And the site has been, uh, inspected by the city fire inspector and passed the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspections. There are no other short-term rentals in this area. Therefore, this application falls a density limitations of the city code. So, again, we'll start back, this is the front of the house. It has kind of a tan vinyl-sided two-car garage on the east side of the house. This is the side of the house, looking to the east, excuse me, to the west. Here, we're looking at the back of the house with the rear yard. It's fenced in with, uh, about a four-foot, three-foot, uh, chain-link fence in fair condition. Here, we're looking to the north at the property that's, uh, immediately north of this site. Uh, this house is on the east side of Reynolds, uh, directly east of the applicant's property. This is a catty corner, as they used to say, at a diagonal across, uh, Reynolds and, uh, Thirty-First Terrace, at another house. It looks actually very similar to this one. Um, this is here, we're looking west up East Thirty-First Terrace. The applicant's property is right there on the, on the right side of the screen. Here, the, these, these two houses, these next two houses are properties that are, uh, on the south side of Thirty-First Terrace, across from the applicant's property. And that, that one, and that one. And here, we're looking down Thirty-First Terrace. The applicant's property is on the left side. It's that second house right after that blue car. And this is the house that's directly west of the site of the applicant's property, uh, which is just, you know, to the right there. Staff does recommend approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. The occupational license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section fourteen four twenty of the city code. The maximum occupancy of the, of the premises shall be limited to six adults with a combined total of ten persons. The gravel parking area adjacent to the house driveway cannot be used for guest parking unless it is paved with a hard, all-weather surface, such as asphalt or concrete. And then the owner of the rental shall provide a means to access immediate emergencies and disturbances on the property.
Thank you. Okay, well, that, is the applicant here? Hi, please state your name and address, please.
Betsy Alguire, six one six Northeast Fairington.
Yep, bend that microphone down, or move it.
There you go.
Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you.
I'm the property manager, Rob Scarborough, six zero three Quincy Boulevard in Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. What can you add to the project? What do you want to tell us about it?
So, uh, as the property manager, uh, one correction, we do have one property in, in Independence, uh, twenty-six oh three South Overton Circle, off of Westport Road, that is currently an Airbnb licensed and renewed a year and a half now. Uh, the majority of our properties are in Kansas City and Smithville, and a couple in Hannibal, Missouri. We provide high-quality and affordable short-term rentals. Our goal is not to provide an Instagram-worthy home with a hashtag mural, uh, on the wall. The, the type of guests that we have coming to our properties are generally on the weekends. They're families from, uh, a lot of times Iowa and Nebraska coming to the city to enjoy baseball or football. And then during the week, we find a lot of construction crews are coming in, and the trend is for those smaller crews to put three, maybe four people into a home versus renting three or four hotel rooms, motel rooms. And, uh, we have found that consistently, uh, all through COVID as well.
Thank you. Do you want to comment, or?
I grew up in Independence, so, um, and I went to Truman, and I, we live in Lee Summit now, but I just wanted to have, um, this is my project, and I'm fond of Independence, and my son fixed up this house because it had a sad past, and, um, so I'm very proud of this house.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicants? Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I do-
Oh, go ahead.
I did not hear anything about the cleaning. Do you guys have your own cleaning crew that comes weekly? What, how you guys do that?
So, we contract out with a cleaning company that after every guest will come through and, and do, uh, right now, we're doing the CDC-recommended guideline, uh, cleaning between stays.
Okay.
And that's a requirement through Airbnb.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, you can be seated.
Excuse me, just one more question. Uh, there was a comment about the owner, the, the rental shall provide means to address immediate emergencies and disturbances. How do you plan to handle that?
Great question. So, first, I'm available through, I'm, uh, I'm available through Airbnb messaging, uh, phone and text during normal business hours, uh, actually, normal waking hours. And then by phone, if it's an emergency, they can call me directly. Um, I pretty much always have my phone on me even at night. And then as far as disturbances go, that's something, we're in the process of beta testing, a noise-monitoring hardware and software system that is designed, uh, it doesn't record conversations, doesn't record, uh, really just tracks decibels. We can set that decibel level, um, say eighty-five degrees, or, sorry, eighty-five decibels, uh, to start tracking a half hour before the city noise ordinance kicks in, and we can start to give preliminary warnings to the guests that they're being too loud, uh, the, the city noise ordinance is getting ready to kick in. And then to take that a step further, we're, we're currently interviewing security companies that they will go on-site, and if there is a disturbance of some kind, we'll break it up.
Thank you. We just heard about that in one of our last cases. Sounded interesting. All right. Any more questions?
Uh, how many properties are you currently managing?
We currently have fourteen under management.
The rest of the questions are for staff.
Okay. You want to go ahead and ask him?
On number three, um, it is six adults, combined total ten people. Uh, going back to your letter, uh, to property owners, it says maximum occupancy eight?
Yeah, that was the, uh, the letter that was sent out to property owners, your, yes, that was an area, it should have been ten.
Should have been ten, okay. Um, and then, I, I, I note that there is not a, uh, you know, you just say you can't use the, the gravel spot for parking unless they pave it over. Is there a need to say you can't park more than four cars there, or six cars? There's, if I'm looking at their, I guess it's page three of the packet, it says, um, I'm doing the math, and it sounds like two in the garage and four in the driveway.
Yeah, you can see from the, uh, picture there, they could, I think, easily put four in the driveway, plus two in the car, in the garage. And, you know, there's nothing that says they can't park on the street, so-
Right.
I think there's adequate parking there for that.
I know that neighborhood well, there's lots of street parking. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Have you been sworn in? Okay. Which one of you would like to come up first? Please state your name and your address.
And I'll try to talk into the mic.
Thank you.
Yes, Bob Page, sixteen three hundred East Thirty-First Terrace. So, we're two houses west of this house.
Okay.
We have lived in the neighborhood for just over forty years, so we've seen a lot of different things happen in the neighborhood. We first moved in, it was a very nice neighborhood, great neighbors, and then we went through a period, ten, fifteen years ago, where we had a lot of problems. The house across the street had the police called two different times. The house next to us, in between this, us and this one, had an abusive husband with police call, and the house on the other side of us, um, had some nice guys who were renting the house, and they were very friendly, but had a party where someone got run over because they were passed out on the lawn type of stuff. And there was a point where we were ready to move out and, and leave. But then things started coming back, and one of the neighbors who's here, Morella Guzman and her family, they moved next door, and they're right next door to the house in question. They moved in, and they have been the best neighbors we've ever had. They're great people, and that's one of the reasons we stayed. And then we've got other people moving in who are really good people and good neighbors, the people on the other side of us, young kids. Guzman's have a high schooler and a college student now that grew up there and went to schools there. Next to us, we have a, a six-month-old, a six-year-old, and a thirteen-year-old. Across the street, we have, and you'll see, Coda and his kids there that live right across the street from it. So, we've stayed because the neighborhoods, you know, the neighbors are good. The neighborhood's coming back. It's, it's very important in Independence. There's a lot of places, Blue Springs, Lee Summit's easy to go to, right? But we believe in Independence. We love Drum Farm being down there, Bass Pro. And we're very concerned. We, we don't know how this fits in, but we do know now that where there's a bus stop and a lot of school kids, we've got a short-term rental, and there may be good renters, maybe some that are not so good, and all it takes is a few to cause a real problem. I have my former boss, I retired two years ago, but my boss, when I retired, lives in Kansas City next to a short-term rental where on Memorial Day of two thousand eighteen, they had a shootout with fifty-six casings they found. Okay? That stuff can happen, and you read about it happening in other places. I don't know that it happens here, but I know now that you have different people coming in, and they're doing their best to police it, but you got different people coming in, and maybe a lot of them are good people, but you, it only takes a few. And again, you've got kids living right across the street. Morella can speak for herself, but I know they've already had, one time they had to ask someone to quiet down, and if they ever move, we're moving, uh, honestly, because neighbors are so important. So, I don't doubt they're trying to do something good with, with the short-term rental, but I don't think it fits in the neighborhood. I think it endangers us. And as someone who's invested in Independence for forty-two years, my wife was actually born here, so she's, that's how I moved here. I never would have thought of it. We won't say how old. I never would have thought of moving to Independence, and I thought, okay, this will be short, and now, I, I love it. I really do. I like being here. I like what's going on with it. This doesn't fit in. This has the potential already, I think, to get people going, eh, I don't think I want to live right next to a short-term rental. Not a good, not a good thing. So, I'm asking you, I, I just don't think it fits in here. So, I'm asking you to please, you know, deny this. Anything else? Any questions? Well, no, I mean, we, we talked about how do we patrol this, you know, that people are allowed or people parking in the street, and, and I will have to disagree. We, yeah, we do have parking there. We try not to do a lot of street parking, because it is kind of, you know. What do we do? We call up, and they tell them to quiet down, and then the next people come in, do they get noisy, and, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's not good, and if you have to have the security to come in, well, that's been a big problem, right? People living next door, and we're a little buffered from it, but not much, and people across the street with kids, and the people next to the door to them have kids. You know, just takes a couple of those, and even though they've corrected it, it's like, hey, I, you know what, I, I think I want to out where I don't have to live by this. Main concern is safety. Um, yeah, there is, is safety and the whole ambiance of the neighborhood of feeling unsafe, you know, of just feeling like, or feeling like, yeah, I don't want to live by that, you know, I don't want that right next to me. I want to, you know, I think I'm gonna go someplace where we don't have that, because ours is not a fancy neighborhood. You know, there's some really nice neighborhoods, big houses and stuff. This isn't. This is the kind of neighborhood that's important in Independence, because these are the people that make up the heart of Independence. So, it's not real fancy or anything, and we need to be feeling like we've got a neighborhood that we, neighbors we can trust, which I do right now. We've got great neighbors and people that want to stay there. So, we can't be in the thing of, you know, yeah, I don't think I want to, like I say, we stayed for, this is our starter house, and I promised my wife we'd move to something bigger and better forty-two years ago.
Madam Chair, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
How many rentals do you have on your street?
Uh, I'm not sure. We, we probably do have a couple rentals on the street.
Okay. I was just curious if you had any rentals on your street, and if you had any problems?
Uh, not really. The problems we've had have been corrected. Again, we've had over the years, some of the things I talked about, those were rentals, and those houses have been flipped around, you know, re, redone like they've done theirs, but either with long-term rentals or people buying the houses and coming in with families and things like that, where it's, it's not an issue. So, it's really gotten better. It's, because, yeah, you do worry about that, but it's- Yeah, no, it's been, um, I think most of them are, uh, owner occupied, but, um, but again, the short-term rental, it's like, if everyone's, who, who's next? Okay, who, how the next one's gonna be? What's, what's that gonna be like? So, we're taking a block that has really recovered and done well, and people have worked hard at it. We've got some great neighbors. We just want to try to keep it that way. You know, it's important to us.
Thank you for the comments.
Okay, and I, and I do want to say, I appreciate the city of Independence allowing a hearing on this and giving us a chance to talk about it. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Important, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt real quick before, I guess she comes up? Um, so, based on his comments, he implied that, I mean, in the, with the person that's getting ready to stand up, it was implied that they've had to quiet down people at this residence, so whether it be a question for staff or the applicant, I would like to understand that it's not a functioning Airbnb yet, because he implied twice that people have been asked to quiet down at that, at the applicant's residence. So, just clarification.
Okay, we're waiting to refer to comments, and then we can come back to that.
My name is Morella Guzman, and I live, uh, one six three oh four East Thirty-First Terrace South, so it's next door. And I'm against this because, I mean, it is not a fancy neighborhood. You know, we've been there for nineteen years, and we love our neighbors, and, I mean, it's basically like having a hotel, you know, next door. So, we already been having a lot of people, you know, like, the weekend, we have different- So we already been having a lot of people, you know, like, the weekend, we have different people, and then now it's different people in the house. So I'm against that. I mean, we have ki, I have kids, they have kids, I mean, it's like, you know, having people, you know, strangers, basically, you know, almost every three days. So that's what I, I mean, long-term, you know, rent, rental, it's, it's good, but I don't like the short-term rental. So, thank you.
Uh, my name's Coda Bertoldi, I live, I'm sixteen three oh nine, East Thirty First Terrace South, right across the street. I guess my main concern is obviously what they've said, but, uh, I, I've had, like, one night, it was so loud, it woke my kids up. And this happened a couple of times, honestly, there's been people in there, I don't know if it's Airbnb already, but there's been a lot of people through there. I mean, it's like, like she said, every two or three days, and then, uh, one day there was like a, a guy peeling out, out of the driveway up there, you know, and like, there's a bus stop right there, like they've said. And everyone around there knows, you know, that there's a bus stop there. These people aren't going to know that's a bus stop. And it's, it's just, uh, just a lot of different people through there, you know, and you don't know who it's going to be. Yeah, just, there's been some shady-looking people over there, if you know what I mean. Uh, and then like, he's in Smithville, I know that's like, probably what, thirty, forty minutes away. I mean, that's pretty far away if something happens. I just, there, there's no other properties like this in this neighborhood either. You know, it's all like, single-family homes. There's a few rental properties, but then, then people have been there for, you know, years. I don't know, just, like, like they said, it doesn't fit with the neighborhood, as far as, you know, there's, there's no place like that in the neighborhood. I, I don't know, it's just a weird spot for, uh, a short-term rental property like this. I mean, you've seen the pictures, it's, I don't know, it's like a wholesome neighborhood, it just seems kind of weird to have people in and out. Like she said, it's like having a hotel. Uh, you just never know. Just imagine like, your house, you know, there's like, a different, there's a different group there almost every day. And then the parking, like, these construction crews, like this morning, there was one in the driveway with a trailer, and there's another one in front of the driveway with a trailer. That's like directly behind my driveway, so they're parking on the street already. I don't know, I just got people, I've got people partying at night while I'm trying to put my kids to bed, you know, and you can tell they're out of town. They're, they're not worried about this neighborhood. You know, I, I don't know what else, more to say, but I get kind of nervous up here.
Yeah, I, I'm very sorry. I've owned a business in Independence for twenty-some years until I moved it back to our home, and Independence is very important to me. I went to Truman High School, I grew up around here, and that's why I wanted to have a house here. But it's friends, it's family, it's my business network, it's, I mean, and like Rob said, his security measures that we haven't put in place yet, and I want to know those things, because I grew up right around the corner, so I'm very sorry. And I left cookies, I think, on your doorstep with my business card, that if anybody was causing trouble, please call me, my cell phone's on there, so I'm very sorry. Sorry.
So, yeah, she's referring to the soft opening that we've had at the home, friends and family circles staying, giving us feedback on what we need to do better there. We were, we were unaware of those issues. One thing that we have done at all of our properties is we do our best to go out and meet neighbors, because we want to be, I want to be that first phone call. So that if there is an issue, I get that phone, I get that phone call first, and I handle it with the guest. Out of the thirteen, fourteen properties that we have, we have, we offer friends and family discounts to our neighbors, we work very well with our neighbors, to ensure, to, to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, because at the end of the day, we want to be good neighbors.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, is your microphone on?
Nope, it's not. Commissioner Young, would you like to ask your question again?
So when you're referring to a soft opening, it's been family and friends, and it's not a functioning Airbnb yet, and people are not, they've been staying for free, or?
That is correct.
Well, and I have, I mean, I've been in business for over twenty-five years.
Ma'am, you need to s-
Like me, you have to ride the mic.
Yeah, I, I've got a large network between the promotional products, signage, and other businesses that I own, so, I mean, yeah, it's my network and friends and family.
Okay.
Uh, when, so when did the soft opening happen?
Mid-March, I would say.
And, and have you been, so how are you handling who's staying when?
That, that's through me.
Okay.
Sorry, follow-up. So since mid-March, how many different groups have stayed at this house that's being considered as a soft opening?
I would say in the neighborhood of six, six different groups that we've had.
So are you going through the Airbnb platform, or you're just, you haven't done that yet, or?
So I have a direct book website.
Okay.
That, through that soft opening, we're, we're blocking those times for people to come and visit, visit's the wrong word, to come and stay, test out the property, and then give us feedback on, on what we can do better.
Okay.
And so you wouldn't need a business license then, through your website? To, to be renting out this property through your own website, you don't necessarily, okay? Okay.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm a frequent Airbnb user when I travel. I'd like to think that I'm well behaved and not, not causing problems. You know, I recognize that I'm vetted through that platform, and anything that I do reflects badly on me, and a, and a prospective, prospective property owner, manager can refuse me. A little concerned by the statement you made about, you know, construction companies renting these things out, because, um, a construction company is one thing. And I've been in my share of hotels where construction crews have stayed, and it has not been terribly quiet in the evening hours. But you also are getting four, five, six individuals who, um, who aren't being vetted. You know, the person that's on the other end of the computer in the construction company's office is being vetted, but the people that are going in there, you have no idea who they are. So I'd, I'd be curious what your position is on that arrangement.
It, it's really the same thing as two different families coming together and staying in the same home. There's only one person of record on the Airbnb platform. So it's, whether it's the office manager, or a dad that's booking for two different families, it's, it's the same type of situation.
Okay. Um, so from a recourse standpoint, you won't know what you've got until you've got, you know, until it's already happening. You know, you'll, you'll book it, it'll look like it's a, a well-vetted individual, you're going to accept the reservation. Four, five, six other folks show up, and they're going to have a party. So the recourse on that, at that point, is to call you, call the police?
I would prefer that first phone call to be to me.
His number is on every single room in the house, too.
Okay. The other question I had was maybe for, um, just a clarification for staff. The, these licenses, these short-term rental licenses are only good for a year, and then they're up for renewal. Is that correct?
You, you're talking about approval by the Planning Commission, or city typical business license?
When this is approved.
Annual, yes.
Okay.
I would like to add on these construction crews, you know, we have limits on the construction equipment in residential neighborhoods. So no backhoes, no big trailers, none of that stuff. Trucks and cars only.
Okay.
Uh, my other question for staff would be, as it relates to the on-street parking, could we stipulate as part of this approval that they, that on-street parking is not allowed? We've talked about that on several other, other cases. I recall there was one over by, I think it was, uh.
Yeah, the owner, the owner said that he would put up his own parking signs.
Well, the code does allow for it. I don't know that you could prohibit it, since the code does allow for it.
But we could stipulate no construction equipment, vehicles.
Well, that's part of the city code anyway, that's something code compliance handles.
So we would a hundred percent be open and, and enforce the no parking on the street, period?
I don't live far, so I'm at the house three times a week, just trying to get it ready for the fire guy and other stuff, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to declare the public portion of this meeting.
There was another.
Sorry. I don't know, can they come back up?
I, I just want to say, the good intentions, I don't doubt them, okay, I really don't. But we've already had problems, and sure, I call him, and he comes and quiets him down, but we've already been disturbed, and then it happens again, and he quiets a different group down. You know, after a while, that really gets to you, okay? We've already had the issue even with the soft opening. Morella has, you know, they've had to ask someone. So the fact that they're ready to stop that is one thing, the fact is, though, it can happen multiple times, and at some point you go, enough.
Okay, thank you.
And, and thank you on the construction equipment, because, yeah, that is insane. And having construction guys stay there, so anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the public portion of this is closed. Commissioners, any discussion, any more questions with staff, or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, it sounds like to me we've already been running a business when we don't have a business license. I think that's kind of a no-no.
Mr. Nesbit, can you?
Oh, oh, sorry, I have my mic on at one time, but, I mean, it sounds like to me we've got something going on shady here, because we've already run a business without a business license. And I don't understand why they would be doing this, even on a soft opening. That should not be feasible. You can do a soft opening after you get a business license. That is not good business. Sorry, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve case two-two dash four zero zero dash zero five, short-term rental, one six three zero eight East Thirty First Terrace, with the five conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Michelle, thank you. Okay, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Michelle?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Wiley?
No.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Madam Chairman McLean?
No. Case number twenty-two dash four hundred dash zero five, short-term rental at sixteen three oh eight East Thirty First Terrace South, has not been approved. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and appreciate your voices. Okay, our next meeting is May twenty-fourth. City have anything for us?
Well, I was asked to remind members of the commission that there is a Planning Commissioners Workshop information that was sent out to you, everyone. And please get back to Miranda within the next couple of days if you plan on attending. I think Chairman McLean has already said that she was going to attend, so anybody else? Please get back to her so she can make the proper reservations.
Sorry, can you remind me the date again?
Was it May eleventh, or something like that?
The tenth, I think.
Something like that, you know, to be honest with you, I don't remember the date myself.
I think it was a Tuesday, I think.
I know I had conflict.
That was all we had.
Okay, Counselor.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce the Commissioners to Rich Wood. Uh, Rich is an attorney with more than twenty-five years' experience as an attorney. When I was a Cub, a, a law student at the University of Missouri-Kansas City, I started out as a law clerk at the City of Lee's Summit. And Rich was the guy that was assigned to me there, so it's kind of cool to have it go full circle. Rich joined us about two weeks ago. His first day, he got a coffee mug, a welcome packet, and COVID from me, so that's a real benefit at our firm, apparently.
Is that why you had a mask on?
It is. So, uh, I, I did want to introduce everybody to, to Rich. Rich, uh, Rich and I worked together at the City of Lee's Summit. We worked together again at another municipal law firm, then Rich took my old job at Gilmore and Bell, where he worked for ten years, he's been at Pulsonelli. He's actually worked, uh, with and, and on the other side of the city, maybe in a couple different scenarios over time, but he's, he's with our firm now. When he was at the City of Lee's Summit, he had five years' experience of doing nothing but land use, well, not nothing, but, but a tremendous amount of land use, for the City of Lee's Summit at that time, and so Rich and I are going to both, you know, kind of co-work with you. So there are times occasionally, like I have clients that meet on, you know, certain nights that would, you know, that would cause me to need to be someplace else. So we don't, we don't want to shift you around with our attorneys, but we do want to, you know, have at least two faces, kind of a backup plan for that. So Rich is going to be here, you know, when I'm not able to, and so I just wanted to be able to introduce you all to, to Rich, and you may see him at future meetings solo.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your help with all this. It's been a nice lifeline to be able to throw out here, and say, oh, do we, do we not? I don't know. Um, I got to go to the training on Friday with Mr. Laber, who the firm put it on, as well as ML, or, I can't remember who it was.
NPR.
MP, yes, yeah, yeah.
Their facility.
It was really good. It was a lot of information, but I really thoroughly enjoyed it, and realized how much I do not know, and how many times I violate the Dillon Law and the Sunshine Law.
And I think I had mentioned previously, and I, I've spoken actually with Mr. Skinnell, um, we, in the past, had done various trainings through the Planning Commission, even when we were, you know, prior to our firm becoming, uh, the City Counselor for the city. Uh, so we do have some trainings that are specific to Planning Commission, and so at some point, if, if you all would like to get a refresher course and kind of walk through that, we're happy to do it. It's, it's a training that we have kind of on the shelf, so it doesn't, you know, it just takes the time to, to actually present it. Uh, we don't have to create anything new from that standpoint, and we're happy to do that if, if you guys are interested at some point.
I, for one, would love it. I think that, I was lucky enough that, I had pretty extensive training, can't say I remember all of it, but I think subsequently, we haven't done a whole lot of training for Planning Commission. I think the newer ones kind of just came on, but I would love it. Because I think one of the things that I struggle with, um, is staying in the Planning Commission lane, and not getting out into the weeds of, of, you know, what, struggling with what to know is relevant to us, is, is knowing what the rent rate is going to be, is that relevant? Is, you know, paint colors, things like that, is that really relevant to what we need to do? And so that we are not getting tangled up in being here for six and a half hours, even though that was probably necessary. But for other ones, maybe even like tonight, that we just kind of stay in our lane and not get out there.
Yeah, I think you, I think you did give a, a training, I recall, it was during pandemic, we were all still at home, I remember you doing a PowerPoint during one meeting. But I don't know if you were on that or not. I know that Commissioner Nesbit was not, so we've definitely, could probably use a refresher.
I would like a refresher on rules of order, parliamentary, parliamentary. I can't say that word.
Yeah, that.
That word, parliamentary procedure, I would like a, a, a- I would like a, a, a reminder and brush up on that myself.
That's typically always included. We also add information about social media, for example, uh, because, you know, the world has changed quite a bit, uh, with respect to, you know, electronic, you know, you know, whether you, you could post something about, uh, cases that you have going for you, and, you know, other ways that electronic, um, um, devices, you know, could potentially create a second meeting when we're actually having a, a meeting, you know, things like that that we would want to, uh, talk about. So, um, there's some, um, opportunity to do that. All included in, in the type of training that we do is the one that I have on the shelf, so.
Okay.
It's pretty comprehensive.
Okay. How can we go about setting that up? Can that, can Jordan, can you do that for us? Can you coordinate it, or? Wake up over there. Okay, thank you. We'll work with Tom on that.
It might be good, you know, from, from time to time, you, you'll have a, a, like a waning, you know, week or so, and we can usually see those coming out from the schedule, like where, you know, we may say where if we've got maybe only one application coming forward, if it's not time-sensitive, we might be able to move that forward or push it back in some way that we could have a clear night, and even just do it on a regular, uh, meeting night. That would make life easier, and we all like to take a night off if we can. But, you know, to get that taken care of, it might be a good way to do it, and then not have to add anything additional to either your schedule or mine's.
Okay. Thank you. I think that would be much appreciated. All right, anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned at... Oh, shoot, I turned my phone off. Eight-thirty-two.